Hi, everyone. On behalf of the Brookline Parents Organization, I'm Ben Kelly. I want to welcome you all to this conversation with our school committee candidates. We have four people running for three seats, so it's a contested race. And we're really glad that all four school committee candidates could join us this evening. And I want to thank Lauren Bernard, Miriam Fine, Donna Perry, Ola Ozenov Palchik, and Naima Toon Davis for helping come up with the questions tonight. And what we're going to do is we have a set of questions that cover a broad range of topics. We're going to give each candidate a couple of minutes to answer. And if you have questions, feel free to pop them in the chat. If we have time, we will ask them. Not sure we'll have time. All of this is going to be handled by Beth Gilligan, who is going to moderate this evening's discussion. Beth has a fifth grader and a second grader at Driscoll School and has been a Brookline parent, I guess, for six years now. So, or a Brookline schools parent. So, thank you, Beth, for taking us on. And I'll give it to you.
Great. Thank you so much, Ben. And again, to everybody who worked on formulating these questions. And certainly to the candidates, because it's a lot of work to run for office. You're really putting yourself out there. And it's in the interest of wanting to serve our schools and our towns. So, we are so appreciative of that. I'm going to very quickly run through everybody's bios. But just to say, these are all very accomplished individuals. There's a lot more to them than what I'm, the info I'm going to give you. So, we'll drop a little bit of info in the chat, but also their campaign websites. I would recommend everybody go and check those out. You can learn a lot more about them. But this is just some brief info that you can also find in the League of Women Voters Guide. And we're going to start with Miriam Ashkenazi. She's a current select board member completing a three-year term on the select board. Before that, she was a town meeting member for Precinct 13 for two terms. She served as Hays School PTO Treasurer and the Board Director of the Hays Extended Day Program. Her son is a junior at Brookline High. Her daughter's a freshman there. She's a retired emergency medicine physician who now works full-time running an anti-racism research program at the Harvard Kennedy School. So, thank you and welcome, Miriam. We also have with us Jesse Hefter. He's a 40-year resident of Brookline, a town meeting member from 2022 to the present, and a member of the pedestrian advisory committee. He earned a PhD in chemistry and retired from a 35-year scientific and technology career at Verizon in 2019. He's married to Brenda, who's a Brookline native. She's a retired emergency medicine, sorry, I went up to Miriam's. Okay. She is a special needs educator, and they raise their children in Brookline and have two grandchildren who are students in PSB. Then we have with us Sarah Mogtad, who is a resident of Brookline since 2004. She was chosen last November by the school committee and select board to fill a vacancy on the school committee. And upon joining, she signed on to the Finance and Capital Improvement Subcommittee. From 2004 to 2023, Sarah was a middle school French teacher at Ridley, Hays, Runcle, and Lawrence. She and her husband Paul have three children, and the youngest is a seventh grader at the Lawrence School. And we also have Carolyn Thall, who has lived in Brookline for 14 years. She's been a PSB parent for 13 of those years, starting with kindergarten at the Baker School, all the way through BHS, where she has a freshman and a senior. Her community and local government experience includes the Baker School PTO, the Brookline Education Foundation Board, town meetings since 2016, and the advisory committee, where she was appointed in 2022 and served on the school's subcommittee. She has a master's in education from BU, and she's worked as an ESL teacher in various educational and social services groups. So, again, thank you all for joining us. Really happy that you've given your time this evening. With our election rapidly approaching, I think early voting begins on April 27th. If you would know better than I, and then the election day is May 7th. So, just to go over just the general format of the event. We did give everybody here a preview of the questions, but this was sent yesterday. So, just in the interest of transparency, Jesse, due to being passover, was unable to preview the topic areas. So, apologies on our end for that. But again, these are all sort of overarching topics that we're going to go through. We're asking each candidate to keep their answers to about two minutes each, just because there's a lot of ground to cover. We want to get to as much as we can. And as Ben said earlier, we're hoping to have time to field some questions at the end. So, we will see how things go. But we are going to start with the students. It seemed like probably the most general question that's coming your way. Just to ask each of you, what do you, what do you see as the key issues and most pressing needs facing PSB students? And how would you work as a school committee member to ensure their needs are being met? And we're going to start with Miriam, go alphabetically, and then just keep rotating. So, Miriam, lucky you, take it away.
I think it's, I think it's not only a great question, I think it is the question. It's the central question. And so, for me, you know, I think, for those of you who don't know, it's been a very personal decision to run for school committee, having two kids in the school and seeing how one thrives and how one struggles and where one's needs are being met and where one's needs aren't. And it's really, it's really illuminated to me that we need to pivot as a school system to address students and their relationships to school in the post-pandemic environment. We need to think about issues of technology, social media, school avoidance, mental health, socialization. And we need to think about different pedagogies of teaching and learning so that we can help all of our students. I feel like if you are a student that doesn't struggle, you're doing great. But we have a lot of students who we need to think very differently about how the school system interacts with them and how they interact with the school system. And we need to be able to give our teachers the tools they need to do that. We need to think about expanding programs like SWS and A-School within a school and A-S. And when I say expanding, I don't mean making bigger. I mean, making more cohorts of them, because what makes them special is that they're small. Right? We need to think about, we just need to think more holistically, I think, of our students, how they see, interact, and exchange with the school, and how we, as a school system, adapt and grow and change for the current environment.
Great. Thank you so much. Jesse, do you want to go ahead and talk about students?
Yeah, sure. Thank you very much. Yeah, just hearing the questions for the first time, as you correctly pointed out. So, I would say that students form the center of our orbit in terms of a school. And we have fantastic teachers and administration around them, but at the center of it all are our students. And so, I think it's most important that we maintain a focus on every student from the moment that they enter our public schools, at whatever age or whatever grade, that we give them what they need to achieve and that we carefully use assessments and evaluations of different types to ensure that our students are progressing in the different areas of study as they ascend through the grades towards the end of high school. There are issues in my talking with parents and educators across Brookline the last couple of months with academic excellence challenges. So, I think we have opportunities there to, to recover, in a sense, some of the academic rigor that has been, been noticed by parents. And there are various opportunities we'll have to work in that area. Some of the issues that have come up recently also speak, speak to the issue about communication between students, teachers, and, and then the administration and parents. And so, communication and collaboration to, to put a, put a process in place to, to have the best communication possible so that parents and caregivers who are responsible for the kids on the other side of, you know, school, when they're not in school, have an opportunity to be well-informed. The culture in the schools and the atmosphere for our students, especially Jewish students and Muslim students post-October 7th is a huge issue and something that we are still dealing with and need to carefully deal with, since it then carries over into the mental health of many students in the system. And then finally, if we, certainly not the lead, not the last of all the issues, but one other I'll point out is that in special education, I've heard from a lot of parents about the challenges in getting their kids evaluated within a timely manner and support services for those students. And so, there's another area for us to, to carefully pay attention to. Thanks.
Thank you, Jesse. And I do also just want to clarify, we sent topic areas to the candidates, not specific questions, but completely, again, sorry that those came so late in the game. Sarah, can you talk about pressing issues facing students in the, in the district?
One of the things that I like to always say is that every student that walks through the doors in Brookline is our kid. And I think that that sort of shows the approach that we have on the school committee and, and, you know, in the schools of every student needs to feel like they belong. I really appreciate what two of the candidates said before. And I just kind of want to build on what they have to say, too. Is that our students need to feel like they belong, that they're, that they're seen in our schools. Right? That they have instruction that is catered to them, that it's rigorous, that it brings them to where they need to be. And it starts with where they are, so that it's, you know, they feel that they belong because they're seen for their identities, but they also feel like they belong because the school is about them and addresses what they need in our schools. One of the things that comes up a lot is with the gaps that we felt after the pandemic, you know, what are the things that the school system is going to try to help to bring people back up to speed? And so, I thought that because the two candidates before me sort of covered some of the things I was going to say, maybe I'd speak to that right now. And I definitely think that, like, our extended year programming, which is like summer school, that the school committee has been putting into place for next summer, that that needs to, that's going to help out our students get back up to where they need to be. We also look at the extra help that students can get, students who have services, but students who don't. So, the win class at the high school, you know, the, sorry, the win class in the middle school, the tutorial in the high school. And we have this way of educating right now that we talk a lot about Tier One. You've probably heard. And it's the multiple tiered system of support. Tier One is what all students get, to give everybody the basics. And then, when we look through evidence-based teaching at what students get and what they need, then we add in Tier Two and Tier Three in order to give the students that, that need more. So, thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Thank you. So, we are a district of 7,000 students, more than 7,000 students, from dozens and dozens of cultural backgrounds and enormous range of abilities and interests, which hopefully can be met. So, it is very difficult to even articulate a most pressing issue or need for students, although I know you said it's a range question, because there is such a huge range of needs and issues. And maybe that's the answer right there. I think the challenge for PSB is, it's a really big district. It's always going to be a challenge in this public system for all students to have their needs met in a satisfactory way, in a way that keeps them engaged, keeps them working, keeps them learning.
I mean, I just think what she did to Ari was so sad.
Sorry?
Oh, sorry. Somebody came in, wasn't muted.
Oh. Sorry, where was I? So, the challenge is to, to have everybody have their needs met, keep kids engaged, keep them working, keep them learning, giving kids a sense of achievement and pride and value in their achievements. This is closely related to the conversation that happened this winter. I think about levels in the high school and having a wide range of opportunity. The beauty of our high school, for example, is that it's known as a place where you can find your niche, where there's hopefully something for everything, everyone. And we want to maintain and grow that ideal. So, that's a fundamental need, is maintaining and diversifying opportunities for learning. Also, according to PSB's Community Feedback Survey that was done in conjunction with the Strategic Plan this year, the most pressing need or desire in the community is for, and I'll quote the survey, rigorous and challenging academics, and another quote, strong core subject courses. Those were the top feedback from the community. And we know that inside our buildings, we're hearing from teachers that students are coming into school with many more and many more complex needs than ever before. So, we need to make sure we have the kind of student support services outside of academics that our students need, that our students' families need, and that our teachers need in order for them to stay healthy and productive and happy. So, it's academics, opportunity, and student and teacher support. And I've been clear throughout my campaign that that's my focus. And from a budget standpoint, I'm committed to focusing our resources on classrooms and direct service.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on to area number two. So, Ben mentioned, I've been a public school parent in Brookline for six years. During that time, prior to Dr. Guillory, our current superintendent's three-year tenure, we had five superintendents in five years or thereabouts. We also have had numerous departures among deputies, superintendents, principals. And we wanted to get your perspective on why you think there's been such instability with, in our leadership and what qualities you think are necessary for effective and durable leadership within our school system. So, it's a little bit of a naughty question, but just to kind of address some of the leadership turnover and what makes an effective and long-lasting leader here in, in Brookline. And we're going to start with Jesse this time around.
Well, thank you, Beth. Over a, as you mentioned, a 35-year technology career at Verizon, I had the opportunity to meet and to, to work in teams of people from one or two or three to two or 300 to 10,000 or 15,000. And in that capacity, I had the opportunity of building consensus, of building strong teams and managing strong teams. And I think one of the, you know, although I don't know, I'll go on record right here as saying, I don't know all the reasons for those departures over the last couple of years, because I was involved in other things in town and not the schools. The, the kinds of things that you have, have spoken just now speak to me in terms of either a dissatisfaction of the people who were hired in the positions that they were put in, or after they were here, they found that the positions they were in were untenable, were unsupportable for them. Either they weren't happy, they were dissatisfied, or felt they were treated poorly. And so, you know, for the, for the, for the, for the, I guess, the beautiful words that are in the, are the mention on PSB website. If we've had that kind of turnover, we have to ask ourselves, what are we doing right? And what are we doing wrong? I think it takes a strong set of us to take a look at that and ask ourselves the questions as to what specifically did we do right? And how could we have done better? And take a really critical look at ourselves, at the, you know, look, work with the, the current administration to look at how their sense of wellness is, you know, socially and emotionally, just like we look at students, and to, to ask ourselves, are we doing the right things? In, in how, in the people, in, at least at the top leadership and bringing in people so that we are not faced with this kind of turn, turnover, which of course sets up a situation of tremendous disruption in the operation of the schools.
Thank you. Sarah, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah. So, I think that when we're looking at the superintendent, the way that we evaluate is to look at the outcomes, right? So, the school committee doesn't manage the schools, right? And nor do we manage the superintendent. But we're there to evaluate, to support, to, to really empower, right? And that's going to make our people in the schools happier is when they can do their job, because we're doing what we can to support them. We're working with them to make sure that there's effective and rigorous standards-based units of instruction. We're, you know, looking at the, the high expectations for content and quality. And we're giving the tools that they need, the sort of like the, what that they're teaching and the, and following the, the laws of what we need to do in Massachusetts in order to teach. But at the same time, it's not a micromanaging situation, but it's an empowering situation for them to do their job. That the schools run, this, this, you know, the schools day in and day out. And on the school committee, we govern and lead, right? So, we're in the high-level conversations about education in order to bring, you know, our superintendent along with that. It's a long conversation to say what went wrong with all of those different superintendents. But I encourage people to contact me. That's something that I've really been wanting to do a lot of work on, is keeping our people to make sure that they grow with us. Our administrators are usually most effective when they've been around for about two or three years. So, if we can hold on to them, we will see better results.
Thank you. Carolyn?
All right. So, this is a great question, and I like that you called it a naughty question, because probably the answer about, to talk about what went wrong with previous leadership is tricky, I think, and I was here for that. My kids started in PSB under Dr. Lupini. He'd been here about 10 years, so that was sort of a natural transition. And I observed and participated in the hiring process that then led to the hiring of Andrew Bott, who I liked as a person. And I guess it just was not the right fit for various reasons. Also, probably too much, as Sarah said, too, probably too complex to get into, but maybe had sort of an orientation. And, and I really respected Andrew Bott, again, liked him as a person. Maybe just coming from a Boston school wasn't quite the right orientation. And then we had a succession of sort of interims before Dr. Guillory came in, which hopefully will be long-lasting. Also, Andrew Bott was here during a time of really severe overcrowding in the schools around 2016, 17. That was just the super peak, and I think that was stressful in a lot of ways. And at the same time, union contract negotiations were going on, which is always challenging. And we've had a respite from that happily with a settled contract until that has to start back up. So, hopefully, that will, that will be peaceful and successful. Sorry, it is short. I, I did have some answers about criteria related to the strategic plan, but that's as far as I can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Miriam, go ahead.
Actually, this is a really important question. And I'll probably be a little less politically correct than my predecessors, as I think most of you know is my habit. So, I think we have a very complex community with a very wide bell curve of needs. And I think we have big building projects, we have very different academic needs. We have K through eight school system. We have a single high school that is, that, as Carolyn alluded to, chock-full of students, 2,100 students. And I think that we couple that with a very challenging form of town government. For the, those of you who don't know, I'm a big fan of moving to a city. And this is one of the reasons, you know, we don't just have school committee. We have select board, school committee, advisory committee, town meeting. I mean, what's happening tonight, actually, at the select board meeting, which I'm missing, is that the advisory committee is trying to make certain cuts to the school committee budget. So, you have all of these cooks in this kitchen. And it, and what it requires is very experienced leadership. And I, like Carolyn, I've been here since Lupini. And I'm a friend of Andrew Bott's, and I have a lot of respect for him. But he didn't have the experience coming from a principal to a superintendent to run a school district like this one. You really need to come to the table already knowing how to do big building, school projects, already knowing how to manage complex personalities on school committees, on select board, on AC, on town meeting. You, you really have to bring all of that. So, I think experience is very key. I think you need to have some level of flexibility. I think, look, everybody makes mistakes, everybody. I don't know anybody that doesn't make mistakes. I make lots. But you have to be able to listen and learn and adapt and say, okay, I did that wrong. I'm, I'm sorry. I gotta, I gotta do better. Know better, do better. So, I think you have to have those qualities in a good leader. And we, we have to hire, and I do think we have hired for those qualities. I'm, I actually like Superintendent Guillory. I think he's, yeah, I think he has those qualities. I mean, I agree with everyone else. I hope he sticks around.
Thank you all. Okay, I've got another somewhat dense question, and I swear it gets a little simpler. So, when we advertised this forum to our email list, there were some people who chimed in with questions. And there was one really thoughtful question that we sort of, we all liked, and we wanted to sort of bring to the group. So, I'll also, after I'm through reading it, drop it in the chat so you can look, because it's a longer sentence, and just to wrap your head around it. So, it's from a BHS parent who wrote, "We have a real crisis of disconnection and mistrust between parents, teachers, administrators, and school committee in Brookline at this moment, born partly from stresses due to COVID and partly from stresses magnified during the labor disputes between the teachers' union and the town. It is my strong belief that we cannot hope to effectively serve students unless all four of these constituencies are working together, communicating effectively, and trusting each other's motivation and skills." So, the question for the group here is, first of all, do you agree with that assessment? And secondly, if so, and if you were elected to the school committee, how would you work to strengthen relationships among parents, teachers, the sort of district slash administration, and the school committee? And yeah, here, let me just go drop the, the note in the chat, just so. It's, because it's, it's a lot of words. But it's, it's basically, the overarching theme is sort of building a climate of trust between parents, school committee, district, and teachers. So, and Sarah, you get to take that one first.
Well, that's a perfect question for me, because that's really what I'm all about. We absolutely can do this. It doesn't have to be contentious relationship. And I like that the author of the question knows that, is that we are at our best when we're working together, when it's collaboration. And part of that stems out of respect, right? When our teachers not just hear us saying in words, we respect our teachers, but when we entrust our, our teachers, our educators, our administrators to do the work that they are already doing and make sure that we stay in our lane and allow them to do that work, I think that we, we, we just get the best out of people. Right? When they know that, that we are there to support and not to like catch them. And so, my way of interacting with people has always been one of collaboration. I love to put people up and make them their best selves. It's sort of who I, who I was as a teacher, and that kind of is the way that I am in my interactions. And I think that the, the author of the question just really has it, is that we can do that here in Brookline, and we can collaborate, we can work together.
Thank you. Carolyn, go ahead.
Thanks. This is a great question. So, I love this question, partly in this forum of the BPO, because the BPO mission is, is focused on information gathering and parent participation. These are central in this organization's mission, which I looked up today. I also value information and critical thinking, and I highly value participation in our public schools. And I, I highly value good governance. I'm coming into this with deep experience in town governance and school participation. I am a parent. I have, I am an elected person. I've been an appointed person. I've been on the town side. I have, you know, longstanding relationships with teachers and administrators. And I'm convinced that for our public school system to thrive, it relies on public support. So, I, it's essential that the school district is engaging with parents, is providing parents and students with clear information about decisions, about direction, about spending. I would love to see more open forums with school committee and administration and staff so parents can get educated about the so parents can get educated about the conversations that are happening within the administration, the superintendent's vision and priorities, the teaching and learning staff, the Office of Student Services. Um, these are the people who really influence what happens in our schools on a day to day, in addition, of course, to the teachers. Um, more so frankly than the school committee members who'll be elected um on May seventh. So I would love to have uh more of that communication, and that's been a central um piece of what I've been talking about um throughout this campaign. Um, so yeah, it's like, it's, I would love to have that engagement, and I would love to have it not just as a stakeholder, but because I really believe that the, the system has to have public trust and support in order to thrive.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Miriam?
Great, thank you. So I, I'm gonna say that um I, I really, I knew this before I became a select board member, but I really learned this on the select board and especially from the American Rescue Plan Act Committee, which I led. Community engagement takes work, and it has to be intentional. It takes time and takes commitment. Um, and, and so we have to actually decide this is really important, and we have to take it on. So what do we do? I, I think we actually make school committee meetings themselves more accessible because you're clearly easy, clear, easier to read agendas, roundups of the meeting, here's what happened at the meeting. We need to school, and I think some of the school committee members are already doing this. We need to have town halls at the schools. We need to go into the school and sit and listen to the teachers and the students and sit and listen to the parents. And I mean, sit and listen. And again, this is a skill I think I've sharpened on the select board, because you really do have to sit and listen. Oftentimes, there's no opportunity to, to respond. You really have to say, okay, I'm gonna think about this and how I'm, how am I going to address it? Um, and, and I think we need to really think about transparency, because I think we build trust with transparency. And so we need to both be actively listening and be extremely transparent, and we need to be a little bit patient, because it, you can't undo all of those things overnight. It's, it is a doing over and over again, saying, I'm hearing you, I'm showing you what I'm doing, and then do it again. Um, so I think that's really, really important. And I do want to say, I have seen even the relationship between the select board and the school committee. When I started on the select board, there was this kind of firewall between the select board and the school committee, and that's gone. It's, it's a much more collaborative relationship, both on the level of the town administrator and with the select board and school committee members, and that makes it work much better. So we need to continue to build that relationship with parents, staff, and teachers, because it works better, but we have to do it very intentionally. And, and through the things I already said, I won't repeat myself, but, or maybe I will, are my two minutes up?
Um, yeah, I was about to say, you're, you're like, you're just on time when you were like.
I gave you concrete ways to do it when I first stopped, so.
Yeah, thank you, Miriam. Jesse, please go ahead.
Thanks, Beth. A great question. Uh, one of the first things that I did within a week of deciding to uh run for the school committee was to write to um Dr. Guillory and ask for a meeting. And um, a lot of people have asked me since that excellent half hour meeting we had, um, oh, did you talk all about the budget and stuff like that? And I said, no, we talked about each other, because I thought the best thing I could do in starting this path that hopefully will get me on the school committee in less than two weeks is to form personal um, personal connections. And uh, and understand each of us as human beings, understand why we're here, and that we're, we have shared goals and share all the expectations and hoping for even shared outcomes. And so uh, I've done that with Dr. Guillory, I've done that with teachers that I've met, I've done that with parents um, all across the town in every precinct by now. And so uh, and in meeting, and especially in meeting with parents. And so um, I think that if you want to build trust, you need to ensure that the people you're talking with understand that you're actively listening to them, that you mean it when you say you're listening to them, that you're consistent in your responses, that they're empowered to make decisions, that you recognize the work that they do um and appreciate the work that they do in an honest way. And those are the kinds of things that slowly, you know, build up, build up trust. Uh, one of the most important, though, at the end of the day, is, you know, all about communication. And so to the extent that we encourage people, you know, to be transparent about their, their agendas, um, when it deals with differences between uh how parents feel about how things are going and how the school committee may feel, and how the school administration is doing, and how the faculty is doing, and you know, through all the levels, uh insanely, you know, number, insane number of levels, but that's.
Oh, sorry, Jesse, you muted yourself.
Oh, yeah, it said the host muted me. I said, oops, did I say something wrong? I don't know.
Oh, no. Um.
All right, so um, yeah, so um, uh, you know, as I, as, as I said, if we have shared goals, if we actively listen, if we're consistent in our approach, and we develop personal relationships uh which are so key, um, that, that will, that will go, you know, miles to, to, to get us there. And to just reflect or add a little bit to what Miriam said as well, um, the um, meeting with parents in, in any way we can, because they have, you know, also crazy schedules, uh, to be adaptable and amenable to meeting with parents and teachers, um, you know, to collect information. And again, to actively listen and to respond um is just critical to being able to open up slowly. You know, trust, it's not a, it's not a um, an instant thing. Thanks.
Thank you, and apologies for the muting, Snafu. Um, we are gonna move on to curriculum. I also understand there are some questions coming up in the chat that we, we do hope to get to. Um, but for, for now, just a few more items that um the BPO came up with. And we wanted to start just by saying, um, so school committee members regularly listen to and voice opinions about curriculum reviews. And uh, in the past year, for instance, they've been avail, evaluating world language and also English Language Art, the ELA, that's ongoing. And the question is, as a school committee member, what criteria would you use to ensure that curricula being presented results in improved student outcomes? And Carolyn, you get to field that one first.
Sure, that's, can you? I, I heard the first part, can you just restate the, the actual question part?
Yes, uh, so it's, it's a school committee member asking what criteria you would use to ensure that the curricula being presented um i- is gonna be beneficial for students and result.
Do you mean the curricula that, that is and presented in classrooms or presented to school committee?
Before the school committee for review. Just strictly speaking about the areas of the curricula, this is the one area where school committee, as I understand it, is involved in curriculum review, is having things like world language being presented to that uh in their evaluating ELA. They're not actively like, you know, in a room shaping the curriculum. But what criteria would you, during this review process, when you're asked to weigh in, um, what criteria would you bring to the table?
Okay, I think I understand the question, although my understanding as an, as a pretty close observer, um, e- especially in, in recent years, is that when we're hearing about um program reviews taking place um in the district, that those are typically um being per- performed by outside consultants. Um, that was the case with the middle school review. There was a ECS review, the world language review. Um, and currently, the ELA curriculum is, is being reviewed, and, and I think there's a move towards um towards bringing in a, a, a new type of curriculum. Um, so what I have observed is, is that consultants are, are presenting their findings to school committee. Um, and then in the example of world language, um, uh, school committee did end up making a decision about um cutting the K through five aspect of the program. So um, I would obviously be really data driven. Um, I have often um uh followed up on presentations that I've watched. Um, some members of the BPO, I don't know if he is here now, a school committee member, knows, uh, gets lots of phone calls and questions from me, asking about the data that's presented. Um, so I would be scrutinizing um the data presented by um outside consultants who are doing program reviews. Um, and ensuring that the decisions that we're making are aligned with the strategic plan, the goals, benchmarks, um, are gonna give us measurable outcomes. Um, and that then decisions that might be made are are not cherry picking. Um, I think that was a criticism that I, I did hear from some um world language teachers about the, the decision, obviously, the decision to cut that program was complex. Um, but there was some uh uh discontent with how pieces of the data from the program review were later used um to sort of justify uh cutting the program in an unfortunate way. So um, I, I am really a good question asker. I am really a critical thinker. Um, I'm not shy to ask questions, tough questions. Um, so I would, I would bring that level of, of scrutiny. Um, and always in a civil, civil way um to those important evaluations.
Thank you. Miriam?
Great, thank you. I think this is a great question. Um, like Carolyn, I'm a data nerd. I mean, I, I run a research program, so it's kind of a requirement. Um, but, but I think we do ourselves a disservice if all we do is look at data outcomes. So I'll start with the data stuff. I think when we're looking at curriculums, we want to ensure that we're using research-based teaching techniques. There is a massive field out there. We can, we can and should be looking at curriculum that has the data to back it up. But there's more to it than that, right? We need to make sure it aligns with the core objectives and what we want to be teaching at our schools. What do we want our students to learn? Um, and I think it has to have quantifiable outcomes and objectives. But also, and this is a really big, important, but also, it has to have some flexibility. We have to allow for curriculum to be a guide, but we have students with many different needs. And so we have to be able to make sure that we're, we're teaching to our students cognitive and social capacity. We should have high expectations for them, but we should make sure teachers know, here's the curriculum. Plus, plus, you can do this. Plus, you can think about adding this other tech, teaching technique, right? The curriculum should be a guide. It shouldn't be a rulebook that's so strict that we leave students out who aren't responding to whatever that particular teaching method or technique or curriculum is. So I think we, we should absolutely be thinking about good data-driven curriculum, but we also have to keep in mind that we have, we have a big umbrella that we need to make sure everybody gets taught.
Thank you. Jesse, do you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Beth. Great question. Um. I'm also, spent the last couple of years of my um tenure at Verizon, uh, running programs and data analytics and data warehousing and reporting. So um, I, I think like Carol also is a, um, you know, pretty tight in trying to get into the data, as Miriam said as well, and making sure, not that it's the be all and end all, but that we are using um curricula that are evidence-based um, and that there are frequent opportunities to loop back on the data that we're gonna collect. Assessments aren't always bad. Assessments, sometimes people say, you know, it's a way of the uh, of uh pulling out, you know, issues. I think assessments should be used as a methodology of measuring and, and simply used to, to, to help us identify issues if they are along the way, and then to intervene if necessary in order to make sure that the uh, the curriculum, that the curricula that we do end up using don't leave anyone behind. Um, so, you know, data and, and, and evidence of the efficacy of those curriculum are extremely important. Let me um suggest one potential area that I've heard from tons of people, including current members of this school committee, and that's literacy. We're now going through another round of looking at literacy. Amazing, in twenty twenty-four, that we have school committee members with kids in the high schools say their kids are issues reading. And so the question to, you know, so now we've hired a consulting group, Hill for Literacy, and by the end of the year, they're gonna give us a set of guide, of guidelines of, you know, what we need to do. And yeah, I mean, we need evidence-based literacy curriculum. Um, you know, growing field of, you know, techniques based on the science, that's absolutely critical. It means potentially reteaching teachers um uh on, on curricula that hopefully will be evidence-based with clear outcomes. And so we catch this at every grade from K through into the high school. And in particular, ensuring that all the stakeholders are aware of what's happening through the communication we talked back earlier. So educators, parents, caregivers, students, all need to get proper feedback so that we can be as successful as possible. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Sarah, go ahead.
When you're the fourth to go, there's a lot of times that you just want to say yes and that, and that, and that. So I think that Jesse really did that justice of what we're moving away from with the research base and moving into the evidence-based. And it's just so, so good that you understand and that um people that are on this call understands that we use a common assessment um across, you know, a, a subject matter and a grade. And we're a- able then to um, to improve upon what we're doing because of the evidence that comes back to us. So that was a, a really nice explanation. I, I think that, so I was able to write some curriculum at the state level when we redid the world language framework a couple of years ago. And I like what Miriam was saying too about how what curriculum is, is it's, it's making sure that everybody has the same skills. But then we still, in Brookline, we love the teacher autonomy around that. So the curriculum can be in, very carefully sequenced so that the um, the students are all arriving at the same place while still allowing our teachers to, to teach through their passions. Um, we um absolutely, in Brookline, need to do more of this K to eight. On the school, current configuration of the school committee, there's different people that have their specialties, and I'm always speaking up for the K to eights. And I think that we want, in these different buildings, we want to have that teacher autonomy. And at the same time, we want our students to arrive at the high school having the same set of skills. So I will always be speaking up for common assessments and evidence-based um instructions so that we're making sure that we have strong curriculum in our schools.
Thank you, and I, I do really appreciate everybody being concise, saying these are giant issues we're asking you to tackle in the course of two minutes. Um, but I think we are doing pretty, I, I think we're doing well time-wise, and hopefully can get to some questions in the chat. Um, I do want to shift gears to talking about the budget. Uh, a, a few of you have just referenced uh K to five world language cuts. Um, the schools, as we all know, um, or all of us pinned on screen now, are facing a significant and continue and continual budget shortfall, resulting in some difficult decisions, um, like that world language decision. And it's often been said that budgets are statements of values. And given this, asking each of you, you know, what your budget priorities would be for the future of Brookline schools, and how would you work to ensure that they're met? And Miriam, you get to go first.
Thank you. I'm just gonna asterisk tiny and correct myself at yes, because I want to uh cor- correct myself what Sarah and Jesse said. Evidence-based um literacy programs, not research-based. Um, with that correction in mind, I'd say I have learned a lot about budgets. Being on the select board and being in the, in the room where it happens, as they say. Um, and I do strongly believe that budgets do reflect our priorities or should reflect our priorities. Um, and I also understand deeply how we are constrained by Proposition Two and a Half. And um, and this tension between budgeting for town operations and budgeting for the schools. But I think the schools are what makes Brookline, Brookline, frankly. Um, and so I, I think it's really important that we continue to fund our schools at a high level. And I think we have to find a way um to um share resources, and this is something that's now starting to happen at the select board and school committee level, reduce redundancies. So we don't need two people doing the same thing on the select board side, on the town side, and the school committee side. We can have one person managing both of those. Um, so I think there are better ways to find efficiencies. Uh, I think when the school committee and the select board work together well, we find ways again to uh, to find those efficiencies. For me, the priorities are, you know, again, I'll go back to my, to the very first question you asked. We have to be looking at students as whole people and not just as um high, high achieving academics. Yes, that's very important, of course. Kids should be challenged in school, but we want to prepare them for the world, and the world is a diverse place. And we know diverse teams are successful, more successful than non-diverse teams. There's plenty of data on that. I'm happy to provide it if you'd like. Um, and so I think we need to, again, be thinking holistically about how we put our kids out into society who understand critical thinking, who understand how to evaluate resources, who understand what it means to be um, an ally, to um also work hard and be creative. And I know it's not really a great. And I know it's not really a great budget question, but but to me, those are the things that take import in our budget. And I do think it's important that we meet the needs of the kids who are on IEPs and on on 504s. And we have to educate those children with just as much enthusiasm, I see your hand, with just as much enthusiasm as the AP students. And I think, to me, that would be a very important place to put our resources.
Thank you, Miriam. And I I I will give everybody a few moments longer on this one because it's it's a big topic. So Jesse, please go ahead.
So again, your question is about the budget, is that correct?
Budget, yes. How would, what would your budget priorities be for the future of Brookline schools? And how would you work to ensure that they're met, especially in this challenging environment of continual budget shortfalls?
Right, so I'll start by saying that there's one pot of money in the town. And if it's not growing and the town and the schools need portions of the money, we're going to face this challenge, or we can even call it a crisis annually. I think on the school committee, it's something I'd have to be looking at on a weekly basis, probably all throughout the year or even more often than that. As budgets get developed within this school administration, school committee members would have to be tighter in with the folks that are developing those budgets and watching how the budget projections for the current year match what was expected or projected in the in the year before, when the proposals were made to see if we're actually being as effective as we can be, given the money that we're provided. The fiscal pressure isn't going to go away. Brookline itself as a town is under significant financial pressure, as we all know, to find new creative ways, if possible. It's, we're talking about it as if it's going to happen. We don't know if it's going to happen. We're thinking about it. And all these approaches that we're thinking about, you know, Chestnut Hill West development, Commonwealth Ave development, Barky Meter increases, whatever it might be, we're hoping, you know, that over the next couple of decades, we'll find ways of increasing things. Nothing is going to happen right away. And so I think from a school committee perspective, to maintain the most excellent education, which is one of the hallmarks of Brookline within public schools, is to look everywhere and to carefully look, whether it's, you know, the kind of curricula we buy, the 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 amount we spend on in our administration side, are we as being as cost-effective? Miriam mentioned the sharing of resources. It's one other creative approach, of course. Coherency and transparency across the town budget makers and the school budget makers over a period of time so that we are, so that we can feel that we're in better control. And then I'd say finally, because I know the the two minutes are probably out there now, is to try to bring, this is something that's happened at a lot of the meetings I've had around the town. There are a ton, a ton of smart parents of PSB students out there who are who are actively retired statisticians, budget people from big organizations, financial management organizations and stuff like that. They've had a lot to tell me, you know, and I, and I, what I tell them is, we need to convene a group, somehow make it work. A group of really smart parents, caregivers and consultants and people that do this for a living, not to antagonize or to work in conflict with the school administration, but to work as a group of caring people to work for the common goal of the greatest school system. And so I think looking at those people, they have a ton of stuff they could help us with and we should be serious about about engaging them.
Thank you, Jesse. Sarah, please go ahead.
So I had a bit of time as other people spoke, having a little bit of a debate with myself about whether I answer the world language question because obviously I know a lot about that. So I'm going to take a little bit of this time to explain what happened there. So I was a part of the committee that wrote the program for our elementary world language program, our K to five program. And I think that when we set out with that program, we didn't really have the full budget that we needed in order to run what we know is an effective program. So over the years, things got even, the budget got eaten, got taken, things got taken away as well. We had originally three times meeting in kindergarten. It went down to twice a week. Once we had twice a week, our teachers were telling us that once you miss a class for some reason because of an assembly or a day off, it's only once a week, and that wasn't effective K to three to be able to learn language. So that happened over the years. And then also, teachers were getting scheduled. If people were paying attention last year, when our teachers were coming to us to tell us about the reality of the program, teachers were getting scheduled all over the building and they weren't able to really get the minutes in on tasks that they needed. Teachers were just stretched too thin in the program. So this program did get cut recently. And one of the biggest reasons was because the classroom teacher was always had to be in the classroom while the world language teacher, the Spanish teacher, the Chinese teacher was teaching in the K to five program. So when people looked at our budget to see what to take away, the world language program was easy to take take away because you didn't need to employ somebody new to come in and teach those hours that were being taken out of the schedule. So what happened there was our schools really wanted to have more time on task for social studies and science, reading and math, and the program got eliminated. I think that what I can do now to, that I sort of said that explanation, to sort of tie it to my budget priorities, is tell you that in the last budget cycle, which I was on the school committee for, what we really prioritized as a group, and these were also my personal priorities, was we wanted to make sure that we had, the budget was sort of kept for the classroom teachers and the subject teachers. And so what happened is we had some very large classes at the high school in honor science classes. And we added more positions to the high school. We also looked very carefully at the sections in elementary. We all know that small class sizes, the the current size classes that we have right now are better for learning, that relationship between teacher and student is at the base of all learning. And so my priorities and our priorities on the school committee were for those classroom teachers. If that's too quick of an explanation, I'd love to speak to any of you. My phone number is on the school committee website and I can give you a longer explanation about that. But just to say that those decisions were made as expenses got more in certain areas, we had to relinquish some of the programs that we had. And we did so in order to prioritize other things for a program that wasn't serving us well anymore.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. We'll move on to Carolyn and we'll give you a bit more time as we did with the others. Thanks.
Sure. My mute, yes. So this one is really in my wheelhouse. I am coming into this school committee race with deep experience on this issue. As a parent, as an observer, as a town meeting member for eight years, and as a member of the fiscal advisory committee on the town side of government, where I served on the school's subcommittee. And the job of the school's subcommittee is to analyze and understand and respond to and ask questions about and advise town meeting on the school department budget. So this is something that I have been through as a matter of work and as a matter of of interest. As you said in the opening, Beth, PSB's priorities are demonstrated through its investments. Of course, through its budget, we have a finite amount of money. So it's incredibly important that every investment is clearly rationalized, that the driver of every choice is clearly articulated within the department and to the public. We have many community members, as we're hearing, who want to understand why did we lose a hallmark of our district, elementary world language? What happened several years ago to gifted and talented at that point called ECS? We need to have a, a more and an exquisitely clear budget process that gives us enough information each year and with look backs so that people understand what is being shifted out over time as other things are being added in. And the public needs to understand what those changes have been, and they need and deserve to be given the rationale behind the changes. And all of that has to be part of the budget message every year in a very clear way. And with all due respect for the difficulty of the budget and the people who are bringing it out, the narrative around the budget is a little bit, it it it's not quite, doesn't quite capture those shifts over time that sort of get worked in and kind of disappear. And this is important, again, because the system relies on public support. Literally, when we talk about overrides, and we will have to talk about operating overrides again to maintain and improve what we do, we have to talk about whether an override is politically feasible. And we need only look to our neighbors in Newton for a cautionary tale about what happens when public support for override and override dries up. Because last year, Newton failed an operating override for the first time. And this year, they endured a very painful two-week teacher strike. So all of this is connected to the need for the public to have the information that they need in order for us to to maintain support. I am enthusiastic about the district's new deputy superintendent of finance, Susan Givens. She seems great. If I'm elected, I would welcome the opportunity and look forward to the opportunity to work with her and communicate to her my ideals for the kind of and amount of information that I believe the department needs to be communicating because we can't afford to lose public support for our schools. And I'm not saying this is an easy task, but it is an area of great interest and great importance to me and absolutely an area of competency and experience and and knowledge that I would bring to the table.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. Okay, so now we're, we're getting closer to the end. And again, I I think one of the, I was trying to scan the chat while simultaneously keeping the timer and listening to you all. I think one of the areas was world language, and I think we that was covered during some of this discussion in in the previous one. So thank you for that. We're on to the visual portion of the evening. We do have one slide that was selected by BPO members to share with you, if I can get my computer to operate correctly. And here it is. So this slide presented to the PSB School Committee in 2021 illustrates the percentage of students in grades three to eight who are meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA, which is English Language Arts, broken down by specific groups. And so the question is, given this information, what specific strategies or initiatives would you advocate for in a school meeting to address patterns in ELA achievement? Does that make sense? Should I go through it again? Or the question, so the question is like, what strategies or initiatives would you push for as a school committee member to address these patterns as evidenced in the slide? And Jesse, you get to go first. But I I probably should get, yeah, if you need a second to kind of
Yeah, I'm still starting this slide.
Yeah. I know you're a scientist, so I appreciate the attention to detail, and it's hard to be thrown into this one, but
Okay, so I mean, I'd start by saying that this is site devastating to see that how 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 this particular assessment, I see in the upper left, it's MCAS ELA in the title. And so I'm assuming these data came from MCAS results. Again, just one assessment tool. I referred to the fact that, you know, earlier that there are multiple ways of assessing. We should utilize the suite of things so that we're sure that we're assessing things accurately and that the results that we pull out make sense and so that the actions we take make sense. Yeah, this is, this is very scary data. What would I want to know is, I mean, these, these, you know, students with disabilities number, you know, of almost forty percent just cries out for the fact that, as Miriam mentioned earlier, we're missing something huge, not little. You know, not English learners, seventy-five percent, that is absolutely huge. And this perhaps speaks also to the data we've been shown that thirty-six percent of the kids in third grade can't meet literacy requirements at third grade. So this is not surprising, although again devastating, that not English learners, seventy-five percent of them are not meeting expectations. The non-white population in the third data point, again, a third, I mean, super scary. And so the, I, you know, I don't, I don't want to belabor it, but just to say that we we would need, the kind of questions I would ask is not how, you know, how did we get here? But as Carol mentioned, you know, looking backwards and then seeing how we got here year after year and what kind of curricula we've been utilizing, what kind of professional development we've been doing, where have we found kids with vulnerabilities? How have we responded? What's our plan? What are our outcome levels? I could give you fifty questions, but in the interest of time, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Jesse. Sarah, please go ahead.
So so MCAS is what we currently have. You know, that that's what we're going to be able to get our information from. I would love to be able to to compare this to some common assessments that we write for ourselves so that, you know, we're seeing if we're, we don't want to be in a situation where we feel like we need to teach to the MCAS. So just to make sure that we're in we're, we're making sure that our our goals and our, what we want is also what we can see reflective, reflected in the assessments that we're giving. I would ask that we want to make our own common assessments for our school system. The strategic plan that was written this was recently written by our schools. Made sure to address in all aspects these types of issues. So we need to make sure that we have concrete plans with measurable evidence to look at what we want to do and to set some goals for those outcomes. We weren't able to write the strategic plan specifically to all of the things that we wanted to address. So it has been something that I, you know, I was new to the school committee as that strategic plan went through. And it's something that I'm really thinking ahead towards the next round of what we can ask for.
Thank you, Sarah. Carolyn, please go ahead.
Okay, let me turn my volume up a little. So first of all, when I look at this slide, I aside from the obvious disturbing problem that it clearly shows, no matter how you slice it, it does raise questions for me, and and these are questions I would ask if I was at the school committee table about these categories as presented and where there is overlap or not overlap. So this is a pretty broad and and it doesn't appear to be a particularly nuanced report. But clearly, it's showing us a problem that we know we have. It is giving us MCAS data, standardized test or something. I've given a lot of thought to. I actually have a master's degree in education in literacy, language and cultural studies was my program of study. And directly after that, I worked at an organization that was in Cambridge at the time called Fair Test or the National Center for Fair and Open Testing that really was was one of the leaders, original leaders in questioning the use and and overuse and and misuse of standardized tests beyond their their usefulness. And certainly, for students with disabilities, you know, it's hard to talk about students with disabilities and and MCAS because it's just a completely inappropriate measure for for a lot of those kids. So I would definitely be looking for sort of more nuanced data before having a conversation about real decisions to be made. But overall, obviously, the response is, and we know this and we've been talking about this, we have big problems, particularly in literacy and in in gaps between groups in in our schools. One of the things I talk about all the time that I would fully support as a school committee member, and we've talked about the budget, would be pushing some of the programs that we know work well to down into lower grades.
Okay, sorry to jump in, just in the interest of giving everybody the same amount of time, if if you could just wrap.
Sure, sure. I just want to say I I fully support the the tutoring-based and community-building programs that we know work well. Scholars calculus, I'd love to see that model pushed further down in addition to improved curriculum. Scholars calculus, I'd love to see that model pushed further down in addition to improved curriculum.
Thank you. Miriam, please go ahead.
Great, thank you. This is my sweet spot. So first I have to kudos to Fair Test, fairtest.org is a fabulous website. Check out their resources. So I I have three points. I'll try to make them in two minutes. The first is MCAS. MCAS should not be a graduation requirement. I just want to say that I think it has some usefulness. Looking at the data like this, it has usefulness. As long as we all acknowledge the asterisk that we know MCAS is a racist classist test, lots of data to support that. Same with SATs, ACTs. Okay, so but we have this MCAS data in front of us. I'm very familiar with this data. This is literally my professional space. I also have a master's of public administration. This is how I I got to where what I'm doing now. And yes, we need to study it more. Yes, there are a lot more questions, but we actually have answers already. We have things we can and should be doing that we know work. They're just not labeled equity programs. And I'm going to give you the two big examples. I opened up the conversation with them. School within a school and ACE are two programs within the high school that have fabulous outcomes for reducing these gaps. And and these are honors classes, both ACE and School Within a School. But we can, students can only opt in starting in tenth grade. So we need to think about how we offer more cohorts of School Within a School and ACE. We think about, we need to think about how we get ninth graders, maybe even bringing it into the middle school. And I agree with Carolyn, we need to think about the calculus project. Both my kids have done the calculus project. It was fabulous. ALSSAP, the African American Latino Scholars Program. And STEPS also has some, even though it's not in the school, it's adjacent to the school, has some very successful programs at addressing these gaps. So while we continue to dive and dig and try to figure out how we got here. And also, we we really do know how we got here. We we need to, we need to be acting. We don't need to keep studying the problem. We actually have solutions in front of us, and we need to start thinking about how to how to expand those opportunities for our students to learn in ways that they get reached at. So it comes right back to the original question, which is, we have to think about who our students are now and teach to them.
Thank you, Miriam. Okay, that concludes our visual portion. Final BPO question, and then hopefully we can get to one or two from the chat. And this is about sort of roles and responsibilities of the school committee. So just to get your thoughts generally on the district's roles and responsibilities around addressing discrimination of all kinds. I think, obviously, everybody's seen headlines in recent weeks. There have been really disheartening reports of racism, antisemitism, anti Muslim bias. The list goes on, chaotic and divisive world events. And how would you work as a school committee member to shape the district's response to these issues is question number one? And then what do you think the role of the school committee is in in addressing these issues? And in my multitasking, I think we are on Sarah first. So please go ahead.
This is obviously something we've all learned a lot about in in the last few months. Most recently, so we already have harassment and discrimination policies in place in Brookline. And what we were lacking was a hate speech policy. So we've been writing that, and I think that hopefully we're going to vote on it tomorrow. There's a lot that I've learned in going through that. I definitely am on board that intent doesn't matter, that words that are hateful, you know, are hate speech, and it doesn't matter that whether the person who said them was was thinking about that. The best course of action I've really come to the conclusion of with hate speech and and looking at antisemitism and Islamophobia is that we really need to make sure that education is a part of what we're doing, that our students are are learning about this. So to that end, I think the third thing that I would say is we don't want to stop having people engage and having conversations. Because we want ideas to come out and sort of know where we are with them. So of course, as been said before, we need to make sure that all of our students are safe. And and that might mean that people need a little bit more information. In our high school, we can teach the conflict in Israel in all grades. We can talk about tolerance and and have have lessons about that. And we need to make sure that we're approaching this with vetted resources that come from trusted sources so that our teachers are supported in what they're doing. I think the the biggest thing that I've learned out of all those things that I'm just mentioning that I've learned along the way is just how complex this is and how carefully we need to proceed.
Thank you. Carolyn, please go ahead.
Okay. So this is something very concerned about. I was already concerned about prior, I'm I'm going to sort of focus on on post October seventh antisemitism, because I think that's been super present in in the conversation recently. So I was already feeling concerned about sort of social, political, cultural content, having an increasing presence in school in recent years. I've had a concern about what we've can broadly call the oppressor oppressed narrative becoming centered in educational settings, in our educational setting, sometimes to the distraction of and to the detriment of of academics and resulting in students becoming uncomfortable, being made to feel uncomfortable, even though surely the intent is rooting rooted in something else. And we've seen that sometimes attempts at inclusivity, if not done expertly, are confusing and and can become exclusive. And I think we're seeing this come to roost. Sadly, in the wake of October seventh, in a truly troubling and divisive way, I think the district needs to acknowledge this problem and look at this problem honestly, holistically, and treat. I'm going to, again, talk about antisemitism specifically, as it would, as it does any other offense against a protected group. This is a huge problem. It needs to be elevated. A hate speech policy might be progress, but fundamentally, there also needs to be acknowledgement. This is happening. This is happening in Brookline, and it matters. It matters tremendously in this community. Part of acknowledgement would be codifying a clear and standardized expectation around reporting, incident reporting by school leadership. Without reporting, we cannot have accountability. And we can't understand the depth or extent of the need for prevention. And a good policy doesn't have to be about punishment, it's about prevention. So we need more and better education. Education is the foundation of prevention. So I think there's work to do, and this needs to be centered on good unbiased facts and education.
Thank you, Carolyn. Miriam, please go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, having problems getting myself unmuted. So some of my answer is going to be what you've already heard, which is, so the school committee's job is policy. And and I think we have to mention that there is a tension between the what the school committee can do because and what maybe it would want to do. Because the school committee is a government body, and we come across this in the select board often. And hate speech is protected First Amendment speech. So the school can make can make policies, it can advance curriculum, but there are limits to what the school committee do because people who make hate speech are protected by the First Amendment. With that in mind, I would say our safe school policy is was last updated in two thousand and six. And as Sarah said, it did not include a hate speech policy. So I think the first big step is creating and rolling out a hate speech policy, which I do also hope they vote on tomorrow. And a part of that hate speech policy includes making sure that we outline reporting and consequences. But there's a whole other side of this too, which is we and we should update our regular safe school policy. Two thousand six is, the world is a very different place than it was in two thousand and six. Just think of social media. We need to really be doing anti bias education. We need to have an anti bias education curriculum in the elementary school. The younger, the better. And again, data supports anti bias education, anti bias programs don't actually work that great for adults. But guess who it works for? Kids. So we need to be teaching them very early. And we have a great curriculum, Facing History is a great curriculum, and the school system is already working to bring that back. And I think we need to model civil discourse. And we need to create safe spaces for our students simultaneously. And and we need to actually be able to create. This is where the critical thinking comes in. We need to create spaces where they can actually disagree with each other, but also have have safe spaces. And then we need to be modeling it for them. I saw the I saw the hand. So that's my.
Thank you, Miriam. I have a lot to say on this topic. I totally get it. Jesse, if you'd like to go ahead.
Thank you, Beth. It's a complicated and emotional issue, especially for the Jewish community, but for really the world at large as well. We see what's happening around the world as the crisis continues to unfold on all sides. In terms of the hate speech issue in the public schools, as Carolyn clearly articulated, exploded after October seventh. Unfortunately, there is no pathway that currently exists for these incidents to be reported. And unfortunately, it's been documented by parents. So there are sheets full of quotes that high school students brought back home to their parents, whether or not they were comfortable enough even to go back to school the next day because of how they were treated in school, either by other students or worse by faculty members who potentially brought certain political ideologies into the classroom. And so we definitely, as a school committee, would help guide and set policies that then have to be supported by the school administration and that then drive their way down all the way to, as Miriam correctly pointed out, to our education of students as young as possible, so that everybody understands the situation that we're in. It's important as well to understand that this is a national crisis. And Brookline is not alone. I had the opportunity in the last about two weeks ago, within the same couple of days, probably some of the BPO parents as well were were able to watch one or both webinars, one by the Lappin Foundation, several hundred people on how to deal and combat antisemitism in K three twelve public schools nationwide. And a day later, one by the Camera Foundation on exactly the same topic, bringing forth a wealth of information from people who are spending full time in their different schools and in curriculum places around the United States to to find ways, as Sarah mentioned, of bringing a balanced and fair and non myth based set of curricular materials to guide the United States in its public schools in terms of combating antisemitism. So we have a lot of resources available. It was very heartening, I'll just conclude with this, very heartening to see our Office of Educational Equity lead, director on one of those calls to collect information and, you know, and to be become potentially more sensitized to this in terms of the nuts and bolts of how it will work once the policies hopefully are implemented.
Thank you, Jesse. So we are almost at time, but there are a couple of questions in the chat that pertain to the same topic. So if people are amenable and do not have immediate ten PM on a Wednesday night plans, which you do, yes. Miriam has to duck out. Do we want to quickly talk about deleveling? Or do we need to?
Do it quickly, but I really have to.
Okay, we'll let you, Carolyn, are you okay if Miriam jumps to the front of the line and then we can go from there? Okay, so there's a question in the chat, there are two questions in the chat about deleveling. And there, you know, how likely, how would the candidates view the likely renewal of the district of its proposal to delevel? And then Allison Plant had earlier asked about, I'd love to hear the candidates' thoughts on the recent ninth grade English unleveled course proposal from BHS to move from pilot to universal unlevelled course offerings. Specifically, I'm interested, she's talking, I guess, more about the process as to how it was handled, the dialogue, the communication, less about the topic itself, though. If that makes sense, you can also see the question in the chat for the future such proposals for curriculum changes. Are there different things that either school committee or school leadership should do? So that the kinds of misunderstandings that apparently occurred in the process won't occur. So it's sort of a communication and process question more than like specifically about deleveling. So Miriam, go for it, and then then you're free to go.
They ordered dinner for me, so.
Oh, that's understandable, yes.
So I I'll 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 start with the process because I am, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the process was, to be frank. And so I can't really give a good critique of it without knowing if if there is a policy on how this process moves forward and if we as a school committee would need to address that policy. But I will say, when you're doing things like this, more is better in terms of transparencies. This is what we talked about earlier on. This is where having a lot of community engagement and transparency is really important. And that's a process thing, you too, you don't need to have a policy for it. You can and you should, but you don't need to, you should be doing it anyway. In terms of deleveling itself, my, the analogy I like to use is the equity issues. You all saw the slide, right? So we clearly have equity issues that are at the Brookline Public Schools. And that equity issue, I like, because I'm a retired physician, I like to say it's a disease. And leveling is the the effects of tracking is a symptom of the disease. And if we just treat the symptom, we don't treat the disease. And that's why when you look at the data around deleveling, it's not that great. It doesn't actually do what if if what we wanted to do is address equity issues, it's not actually doing that all that well. There is a moderate amount of data on deleveling or tracking or untracking, or however you want to call it. In the global literature, anti racism literature, most of it is lukewarm. There are ways to do it and do it well. And I don't think we have enough data for what we've done at Brookline High to actually say that that's the case for us. So I actually think the school committee made, I'm totally behind the decision they made. We do need more data. We need to be really clear what our goal is with deleveling, because if it's equity, we're not achieving it. And again, I'll go back to the, if we're just going to treat the symptom, then it should be no surprise to us that the disease remains. So I think we need to be careful that we're not just doing something that looks like we can do it just for the sake of doing it. We really have to be doing the right kind of stuff. So that's my, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Miriam. Thank you for joining us this evening. If you need to hop off, that we we understand.
I am literally, I cut out of a work event to come here. They are holding my plate at dinner, so I am gonna.
Okay.
There's no, I don't want to miss any questions or anything.
Yes, no, this is the last question, and we're going to jump back, we're going to go back in order and go ahead to Carolyn. Thank you for seating the first spot to Miriam. So Carolyn, please go ahead.
Sure. So I'm very happy to talk about this. This is a really important issue, and I was actually very involved in the conversation about this this winter. I was trying to start a conversation with school committee leadership about this all the way back in late November, December, when I saw this coming down the pike in school committee meetings and subcommittee meetings. And and because I am very tapped into the community, I was trying to alert school committee members that parents were going to have concerns about the rollout of of unleveling when they did hear about it. And I could see that there was not a plan to communicate with parents about it. And indeed, once parents did hear about this in in a sort of sudden way, they had a lot to say. I think that the conversation, I I'm really proud of the way that the conversation took place with school committee and administration. Parents were, did their research, school committee did their research. Administration came in with their information. And we had exactly the kind of conversation that should happen, that was civil, that was fact based. And people have concerns. When I was planning to move to Brookline or thinking about moving to Brookline, I remember having some friends who had kids at the high school at the time, and they were saying, come to Brookline, it's great, the high school is great. Everybody can find their niche, there's something for everyone. And I think that's been very largely true for generations of BHS students and families. Our high school's a jewel. And it has a longstanding and well deserved reputation for excellence. And that reputation is built on a foundation of variety of opportunity, variety of course offerings and curricula and approaches. And we are a community of people who come here for the academic achievement that is made possible through the opportunities in our schools. So when it became clear to parents that fundamental change, or at least a perceived change in opportunity was imminent, they were taken aback. In opportunity was imminent, they were taken aback. And I think there's been acknowledgement all around that there needed to be better communication. So quickly, in the end, at the moment, I'm gratified with the decision that was made to pause the full rollout. Of unlevelled ninth grade English. And the conversation will continue. I believe it will happen, continue again as civil and high level, and we shall stay tuned.
Thank you, Carolyn. Jesse, please go ahead.
Thanks, Beth. Just take a second since this is the last question to thank you. And thank all of BPO and everyone for attending. This was a very nice get together ability, opportunity to to share. And I hope that we answered your questions, all all the candidates. On the subject of how deleveling was done, the outpouring of public comment from from a vast majority of parents and caregivers. Who at the beginning of their public comments stated, I've never spoken at public comment before. And so this happened because, as I think Carolyn mentioned, many people were taken aback. This speaks to a communication challenge. The potentially the school district moving forward in a direction while parents were not really in the loop. About what the further plans were. I think at the English level, people were potentially okay, a certain group of people. But when it, when when the, when the discussion went to math and science, many people stepped forward and said, I don't think we're ready yet. We certainly don't have enough data. The fact that the school district, you know, presented to the school committee with not even a full year of data. And tried to derive from that the outcomes seemed a little bit ambitious, to say the least. And so I was gratified to see that the school committee utilized a a vote to say, let's not. Make the decision now, but postpone it out a little while, because we really need the evidence. And without the outcomes evidence based, we don't really know what we're, you know, we don't really know that it's been as successful as we thought it might. As as what was being said. I would say one other thing, one of the school committee members that evening, Steve Ehrenberg, made a very telling comment. I resonated with me when he said that students should not be showing up at ninth grade with, let's say, literacy issues or math problems. Or issues or any other kinds of things. In other words. You know, sort of shame on us as a community, forget just the school committee, but all of us, if we're allowing a system to move forward, whereas our kids, as I said at the beginning. If they're falling behind in in first or second grade in an area, we need to pay attention. We need to be. Making sure that our teachers and that the other other individuals who have opportunities to intervene in the classroom, to assess. Have the opportunity to recognize that. And if parents and caregivers are saying, I think there's an issue. We need to respond, and we need to respond in a timely manner, so that we carry, bring, lift, whatever is required. The the children who who are vulnerable forward, and so that they can achieve, and so that they can be successful, that their. Family situations are are feeling everything's going well, and that, you know, it's basically great for wellness all all around. And so that by the time they get to ninth grade, perhaps this is, you know, one option, one option that the school committee should look at. In in collaboration with the district, but one of many. And that we, the the needs of parents who feel that a a. A leveled environment will provide the best growth for students in each of the different areas with potential. Through all the different projects we're doing to move children, to move students up levels without putting burdens or. Or obstacles in their way is the way, is is another approach that we could utilize across the board. To ensure that all groups have equitable access to educational success.
Thank you, Jesse. And then Sarah, you're up.
Well, it's never much of a discussion if you don't have somebody speaking to the other side. So while I didn't vote for the pilot to be for everybody because of what was just cited. I, once we were talking about equity, it wasn't really shown to us through the the evidence that this was a good idea. So I happened to vote no for it. But in order to keep this conversation interesting, I'm going to try to speak a little bit to what the teachers were doing when they made this class. So this message might not have gotten out there to the public. It wasn't the school committee's message to to share, it was the teacher's message, but here it is. So what we heard that those, through those sort of school committee meetings, if you go back and and watch them. Is that this pilot class for ninth grade English was made to be a class that would bring. The ninth graders together. When you first arrive to the building, it's a good landing place, it gets everybody on the same page before they then go off to be in leveled classes. If coming into the ninth grade, you're not in a level, but you attend the ninth grade unlevelled class. Then those teachers that are, that know the the high school, that know what those classes are like, they would then. Help put you into the levels for the for the years to come. So it was a place to have like a starting point, right? And also, the teachers that devised this class, the English teachers, when they spoke to us at school committee. Had really, it like the innovation was coming from them, and they were doing this for the love of the students that they know before them. And like the students that they know, and they know how it how it goes. And it was just so interesting to hear, like, some of the ideas that they had put into the class. They had every other, every other text that was read was a common text where the teacher would really teach the text. And then the next text that the students would address would be a a text that you could choose from one of three levels. And the teacher would take the format that they had used to discuss that text that everybody had the same common one. In order to have the students lead some groups and students be a part of conversations at the different levels. It was such an exciting class, and it was really just such a pleasure to hear about. But we weren't able to vote that this class goes forward to be a class for everybody. So what's gonna happen now? Well, there's the opportunity that this class, you can elect to be in this class next year. And there's the opportunity to think about going forward if the class would meet our, you know, our. Credentials, that maybe someday it could be a class that would be offered for more students.
Thank you, Sarah, and thanks to all of you. These were very complex questions. You all had incredibly thoughtful answers. And I I think probably most people who are tuned in are aware of this, but just in case, this is a volunteer position. It's a lot of time. It's it's all of you stepping up and wanting to give a lot to our schools and our students. So it's just the fact that you're put through, you've all thrown your hat into the ring is really incredible. So thank you for doing that. The election is May 7th. I don't know if Lauren or Ben or anyone wanted to hop in and make a concluding remarks on behalf of the BPO. I will let you do the technology things that might enable that, or either that or we sign off. Lauren, I I see you're unmuted.
Yes. So I just, I'm just gonna speak very briefly. I want to thank all of the candidates for making time. To to do this forum, and I think it was really helpful. I want to thank the people who attended on a school night, nonetheless. And we tend to do these things on Sunday nights, but not this time. And I just also want to say that this was recorded, and the recording will be made available. In the next couple of days, that will be emailed out and posted to our website, BrooklineParents.org. And thank you again. I'll keep it short and sweet. It's late. And really, every, we we really appreciate the candidates taking the time to answer these complex questions. Thank you. Good night.